The Senate will come to order with asks that unauthorized visitors exit the chamber at this time as the Senate is coming to order. Let's quieten the chamber down at this time. Chair recognizes the distinguished Senator from the 53rd.
Thank you, Mr. President. What a glorious day it is here at the state Capitol and all the men and women here to do the work of the people of Georgia. A moment in history, long time ago on this date, the Senator from the 52nd woke up one day and started putting people to sleep. And later on, he became an anesthetist, an anestheticist, an anestheticist.
Imagine that.
And a great Senator of this body.
Yeah, how about the Journal? Has it been read?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Mr. President, the Journal's been read and found to be correct.
Beautiful, wonderful. Well, I hope the Senator from the 52nd doesn't put anybody to sleep today. But a great, uh, great man indeed. The Journal has, uh, is there objection dispensed with the reading of the Journal? Reading of the Journal is dispensed with, is there objection to the confirmation of the Journal? Chair is none, and the Journal is confirmed. All Senators having bills and resolutions introduced, please bring them to the Secretary's desk at this time. The Secretary will read a report of standing committees.
Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Assignments has had under consideration the appointments made by the Governor that require Senate confirmation, and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation: That the appointments be confirmed as submitted, respectfully submitted, Honorable Casey Kegel, Chairman. Mr. President, the City Senate Committee on Appropriations has had under consideration the following legislation, and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation: HB 1 EX do pass, HB 5 EX do pass, respectfully submitted, Senator Hill of the 4th District, Chairman. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Finance has had under consideration the following legislation, and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation: HB 4 EX do pass, respectfully submitted, Senator Huffstettler of the 52nd District, Chairman. Mr. President, that completes the order.
The Secretary will read bills and resolutions for the second time.
HB 1 EX by Representative Ralston of the 7th, supplemental appropriations, state fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. HB 4 EX by Representative Rhodes of the 120th and others. Income tax, tax credit for certain taxpayers based on certain expenses incurred during Hurricane Michael. HB 5 EX by Representative Rhodes of the 120th and others. The Governor's executive order suspending collection of sales and use tax levied on jet fuel, ratify. Mr. President, that completes the order.
It is now time for the morning roll call, time for the morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? The Chair will now recognize the Dean of the Senate, the Senator from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 6th and the 39th.
Oh, no, not the 6th, it'd be the 5th and the 39th.
5th, I beg your pardon, 5th, yes.
The Senator from the 6th is sitting at her desk looking lovely today, and I don't think there's any reason to excuse her.
Not today.
The 5th and the 16th, without objection, Senator from the 5th and 16th will be excused. Chair recognizes Senator from the 34th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask to please excuse the Senator from the 38th for business outside the Capitol. She is en route.
38th, without objection, Senator from the 38th will be excused. Chair recognizes the distinguished Senator from the 46th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 56th for business outside the Capitol.
56th, without objection, Senator from the 56th will be excused. Chair now recognizes Senator from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 43rd for business outside of the Capitol.
43rd, 43rd, without objection, Senator from the 43rd will be excused. Are there any other motions to excuse? Senators, please signify your presence by voting the a switch. The Secretary will unlock the machine. I would like to take this time before we do our morning devotion. We have Senators-elect that are present with us today from District 5. Sheikh Ramon, who's here with us, great to have you. Let's give him a round of applause. Also, Senator-elect from the District 48, Zara Krencek is with us as well. Glad to have you, welcome. And also, the Senator from the 29th, Randy Roberts, who's here with us as well. Let's give, he's been joining us this week, and really great to have the Senator-elect's present with us in this special session as well. It is now time for our morning devotion. With asks that all Senators, please take your seats and cease all audible conversation at this time as we are preparing the chamber for the morning devotion. It is now my distinct honor to call upon the distinguished minority leader, the Senator from the 41st, first to lead us in our pledge and also introduce our special chaplain of the day. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. We wear the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Georgia flag. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation.
Mr. President, Members of the Senate, it's always an honor to introduce this next Reverend Minister to come to us to give messages and to fill our day with the bright hope of tomorrow. Reverend Ken Samuels has been here several times before. He is an outstanding community leader in Mike County, DeKalb County, and in fact, in this whole metro area and state. He has a great church, Victory, is it For the World? For the World, Victory for the World Church on Hairston Road in Stone Mountain, Georgia. And if you're ever in a neighborhood, you need to come by because he delivers a message that brings all of us up and enriches our lives. You know, he has a rich background. He went to Wesleyan College in Connecticut, got a history degree, and I see that richness of history in his sermons. It helps, you know, fulfill the message that enlightens people. He went on to Emory, got a theology degree, and was ordained at 23. And he has just lived his life dedicated to our community. He served on numerous boards in numerous ways and received too many awards to even go into. He was president of DeKalb County NAACP, I think, which was an outstanding honor, you know, with the DeKalb NAACP being so vibrant. His leadership there helped many people as well. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce to you our Reverend for the day, Reverend Kenneth Samuel. Thank you.
...made by the governor that require Senate confirmation and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation, that the appointments be confirmed as submitted, respectfully submitted, Honorable Casey Kegel, Chairman. Mr. President, the City Senate Committee on Appropriations has had under consideration the following legislation and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation, HB one EX do pass, HB five EX do pass, respectfully submitted, Senator Hill of the 4th District, Chairman. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Finance has had under consideration the following legislation and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation, HB four EX do pass, respectfully submitted, Senator Huff Stettler of the 52nd District, Chairman. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Secretary will read bills and resolutions for the second time.
HB one EX by Representative Ralston of the 7th, supplemental appropriations, state fiscal year, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. HB four EX by Representative Rhodes of the 120th and others. Income tax, tax credit for certain taxpayers based on certain expenses incurred during Hurricane Michael. HB five EX by Representative Rhodes of the 120th and others. The governor's executive order suspending collection of sales and use tax levied on jet fuel, ratify. Mr. President, that completes the order.
It is now time for the morning roll call, time for the morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? The Chair will now recognize the Dean of the Senate, the Senator from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 6th and the 39th.
Or no, not the 6th, it'd be the 5th and the 39th.
Fifth, I think, part, fifth, yes.
The Senator from the 6th is sitting at her desk looking lovely today and I don't think there's any reason to excuse her.
Not today.
The 5th and the 16th, without objection, Senator from the 5th and 16th will be excused. Chair recognizes Senator from the 34th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask to please excuse the Senator from the 38th for business outside the Capitol. She is in route.
38th, without objection, Senator from 38th will be excused. Chair recognizes the distinguished Senator from the 46th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 56th for business outside the Capitol.
56th, without objection, Senator from the 56th will be excused. Chair now recognizes Senator from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 43rd for business outside of the Capitol.
43rd, 43rd, without objection, Senator from the 43rd will be excused. Are there any other motions to excuse? Senators, please signify your presence by voting the a switch. The Secretary will unlock the machine. I would like to take this time before we do our morning devotion, we have Senators elect that are present with us today from District 5, Sheikh Ramon, who's here with us, great to have you, let's give him a round of applause. Also, Senator elect from the District 48, Zara Krencheck is with us as well, glad to have you, welcome. And also, the Senator from the 29th, Randy Roberts, who's here with us as well, let's give, he's been joining us this week and really great to have the Senator elects present with us in this special session as well. It is now time for our morning devotion. Would ask that all Senators, please take your seats and cease all audible conversation at this time as we are preparing the chamber for the morning devotion. It is now my distinct honor to call upon the distinguished minority leader, the Senator from the 41st, to lead us in our pledge and also introduce our special chaplain of the day. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. We wear the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Georgia flag. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation. Mr. President, Members of the Senate, it's always an honor to introduce this next Reverend Minister to come to us to give messages and to fill our day with the bright hope of tomorrow. Reverend Ken Samuels has been here several times before. He is an outstanding community leader in my county, the Cab County, and in fact, in this whole metro area and state. He has a great church, Victory, is it For the World? For the World, Victory For the World Church on Hairston Road in Stone Mountain, Georgia. And if you're ever in a neighborhood, you need to come by because he delivers a message that brings all of us up and enriches our lives. You know, he has a rich background, he went to Wesleyan College in Connecticut, got a history degree, and I see that richness of history in his sermons, it helps fulfill the message that enlightens people. He went on to Emory, got a theology degree, and was ordained at 23, and he has just lived his life dedicated to our community. He served on numerous boards in numerous ways and received too many awards to even go into. He was president of the Cab County NAACP, I think, which was an outstanding honor, you know, with the Cab, NAACP being so vibrant, his leadership there helped many people as well. So without further ado, I would like to introduce to you our Reverend for the day, Reverend Kenneth Samuel. Thank you.
Good morning to Mr. Speaker, to all of the Senators who make up this legislative body, to my Senator Steve Henson, it is an honor to be with you on today. In the 18th chapter of Matthew's Gospel, the disciples of Jesus are concerned about their own self-aggrandizement, they're concerned about their own seats of power and prominence in the kingdom of God. In response to these concerns, Jesus makes this statement, "If a shepherd has a hundred sheep and one of them has gone astray, does he not leave ninety-nine on the mountains and go in search of the one that went astray? So it is not the will of our Father in heaven that one of these little ones should be lost." In this critical statement, Jesus redefines and redirects the disciples' understanding of greatness by directing the attention of the disciples to the place where God's attention is focused, to the one lost sheep, to the ones who have been left back, looked over, and left behind. A shepherd who leaves ninety-nine sheep and goes to rescue one lost sheep is antithetical to the power and business models of our day. Any business owner would be completely satisfied with managing and serving ninety-nine percent of the market. In academic circles, scoring ninety-nine on a test is pretty good, in most classrooms that would earn a person a gold star. Even when you go to a restaurant, if you look at the rating of the restaurant, if you see ninety-nine percent on the wall, you feel pretty good about eating at that restaurant. You just hope that the one percent doesn't show up in your soup or salad. But according to Jesus, ninety-nine percent, even ninety-nine and a half percent is not good enough. Ninety-nine is good, but ninety-nine is incomplete. And what God requires is our complete dedication to love, to compassion, and to human service. In the little church I grew up in, in South Carolina, we used to sing a song that said, "Good, better, best, never let it rest, till your good is better and your better is best." Mediocrity, my brothers and sisters, is the enemy of total commitment to excellence. Looking over those who have been left behind is an insult to Almighty God. Leaving ninety-nine and going after the one doesn't make much mathematical sense, but it makes all the theological sense in the world. It means that even those in the minority should not be dismissed nor devalued. Jesus says that God has angels who look out for those whom others look over. I used to have a problem with leaving the ninety-nine and going after the one. I used to have a problem with that, it didn't make logical, mathematical, business sense to me, but that's because I identified myself with the ninety-nine until God revealed to me that I was the one, the one who was lost, the one who was in trouble, the one who had made bad decisions. God said, "You are the one that I left the ninety-nine to come looking for." When we see ourselves only in the ninety-nine, we become complacent and complicit with keeping certain people on the margins. But when we see ourselves as the one lost, as the one in trouble, as the one in need of amazing grace, every fight for freedom, every fight for fairness, every fight for justice becomes our fight as well. God help us to fight the good fight. Would you pray with me? Gracious God, you have called us to be stewards of the public trust. You have given us so many resources and we are grateful for your many blessings. But God help us to realize that even as we enjoy our privileges and as we enjoy our opportunities that you have afforded, that there are yet those represented by the lost sheep in trouble, disenfranchised, confused, living in darkness. God help us to be expressions of your care and your concern, and help us to do everything within our power, to focus our attention and our efforts where heaven's attentions and efforts are focused on the one lost sheep. Thank you for rescuing that one sheep, because when you rescued the one sheep, you rescued us. It's in the name of the good shepherd, Jesus the Christ, that we pray. Amen.
It is now time for the morning roll call, time for the morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? The Chair will now recognize the Dean of the Senate, the Senator from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 38th for business outside the Capitol. She is in route.
38th, without objection, Senator from 38th will be excused. Chair recognizes the distinguished Senator from the 46th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 56th for business outside the Capitol.
56th, without objection, Senator from the 56th will be excused. Chair now recognizes Senator from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 43rd for business outside of the Capitol.
43rd, 43rd, without objection, Senator from the 43rd will be excused. Are there any other motions to excuse? Senators, please signify your presence by voting the a switch. The Secretary will unlock the machine. I would like to take this time before we do our morning devotion, we have Senators elect that are present with us today from District 5, Sheikh Ramon, who's here with us, great to have you, let's give him a round of applause. Also, Senator elect from the District 48, Zara Krencheck is with us as well, glad to have you, welcome. And also, the Senator from the 29th, Randy Roberts, who's here with us as well, let's give, he's been joining us this week and really great to have the Senator elects present with us in this special session as well. It is now time for our morning devotion. Would ask that all Senators, please take your seats and cease all audible conversation at this time as we are preparing the chamber for the morning devotion. It is now my distinct honor to call upon the distinguished minority leader, the Senator from the 41st, to lead us in our pledge and also introduce our special chaplain of the day. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. We wear the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Georgia flag. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation. Mr. President, Members of the Senate, it's always an honor to introduce this next Reverend Minister to come to us to give messages and to fill our day with the bright hope of tomorrow. Reverend Ken Samuels has been here several times before. He is an outstanding community leader in my county, the Cab County, and in fact, in this whole metro area and state. He has a great church, Victory, is it For the World? For the World, Victory For the World Church on Hairston Road in Stone Mountain, Georgia. And if you're ever in a neighborhood, you need to come by because he delivers a message that brings all of us up and enriches our lives. You know, he has a rich background, he went to Wesleyan College in Connecticut, got a history degree, and I see that richness of history in his sermons, it helps fulfill the message that enlightens people. He went on to Emory, got a theology degree, and was ordained at 23, and he has just lived his life dedicated to our community. He served on numerous boards in numerous ways and received too many awards to even go into. He was president of the Cab County NAACP, I think, which was an outstanding honor, you know, with the Cab, NAACP being so vibrant, his leadership there helped many people as well. So without further ado, I would like to introduce to you our Reverend for the day, Reverend Kenneth Samuel. Thank you.
Good morning to Mr. Speaker, to all of the Senators who make up this legislative body, to my Senator Steve Henson, it is an honor to be with you on today. In the 18th chapter of Matthew's Gospel, the disciples of Jesus are concerned about their own self-aggrandizement, they're concerned about their own seats of power and prominence in the kingdom of God. In response to these concerns, Jesus makes this statement, "If a shepherd has a hundred sheep and one of them has gone astray, does he not leave ninety-nine on the mountains and go in search of the one that went astray? So it is not the will of our Father in heaven that one of these little ones should be lost." In this critical statement, Jesus redefines and redirects the disciples' understanding of greatness by directing the attention of the disciples to the place where God's attention is focused, to the one lost sheep, to the ones who have been left back, looked over, and left behind. A shepherd who leaves ninety-nine sheep and goes to rescue one lost sheep is antithetical to the power and business models of our day. Any business owner would be completely satisfied with managing and serving ninety-nine percent of the market. In academic circles, scoring ninety-nine on a test is pretty good, in most classrooms that would earn a person a gold star. Even when you go to a restaurant, if you look at the rating of the restaurant, if you see ninety-nine percent on the wall, you feel pretty good about eating at that restaurant. You just hope that the one percent doesn't show up in your soup or salad. But according to Jesus, ninety-nine percent, even ninety-nine and a half percent is not good enough. Ninety-nine is good, but ninety-nine is incomplete. And what God requires is our complete dedication to love, to compassion, and to human service. In the little church I grew up in, in South Carolina, we used to sing a song that said, "Good, better, best, never let it rest, till your good is better and your better is best." Mediocrity, my brothers and sisters, is the enemy of total commitment to excellence. Looking over those who have been left behind is an insult to Almighty God. Leaving ninety-nine and going after the one doesn't make much mathematical sense, but it makes all the theological sense in the world. It means that even those in the minority should not be dismissed nor devalued. Jesus says that God has angels who look out for those whom others look over. I used to have a problem with leaving the ninety-nine and going after the one. I used to have a problem with that, it didn't make logical, mathematical, business sense to me, but that's because I identified myself with the ninety-nine until God revealed to me that I was the one, the one who was lost, the one who was in trouble, the one who had made bad decisions. God said, "You are the one that I left the ninety-nine to come looking for." When we see ourselves only in the ninety-nine, we become complacent and complicit with keeping certain people on the margins. But when we see ourselves as the one lost, as the one in trouble, as the one in need of amazing grace, every fight for freedom, every fight for fairness, every fight for justice becomes our fight as well. God help us to fight the good fight.
We have some special guests we'd like to recognize on the Senate floor today, and the Secretary will read a resolution.
Senate Resolution Ten EX by Senators Thompson the Fourteenth, Huffsteller the Fifty-Second, McCune of the Twenty-Ninth, Schaefer the Forty-Eighth, and Stone of the Twenty-Third. A resolution recognizing and commending Carl Lewis Tidwell on his outstanding public service and for other purposes. Whereas Carl Lewis Tidwell, perfectly known as C.L., or Clean Living, as he likes to say, was born to Herschel and Ethel Tidwell in nineteen forty. And whereas, in addition to being a successful businessman, C.L. is a highly respected leader in the Bartow community, as shown by his membership with the U. Harley Masonic Lodge for more than fifty years, membership with Cartersville First Baptist Church, and through his monthly political breakfast to help the public stay informed on politics that affect them. And whereas his willingness to host these monthly events is invaluable because of his ability to carry discussions between people of all walks of life, to have productive conversations despite differences in opinion. And whereas his outstanding character has led many people in the community to confide in him for his honest advice and opinions. And whereas it is abundantly fitting and proper that the outstanding accomplishments of this remarkable and distinguished Georgian be appropriately recognized. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate that the members of this body recognize and commend the extraordinary character of Carl Lewis C.L. Tidwell in his compassion and dedication to serving the community. That completes the order.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. It is a great, great honor to have a dear, personal friend of mine and an individual who has meant so much for all of northwest Georgia. C.L. Tidwell is an individual who hosts a great breakfast and continues to keep the community not only abreast, but a wonderful friendship and an environment where individuals can come and enjoy themselves. And I've had the great privilege over twelve years to be there on numerous occasions. Wonderful man that gives back to the community, and we are honored and blessed to have him present with us today and to speak to the resolution and recognize our very, very special guest today. It is now my honor to call upon the distinguished Senator from the Fourteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's often that we honor a lot of people that we've already been singing their praises, but today I get the privilege of being able to honor an unsung hero. You see, rarely do you get the opportunity to meet people that are truly gracious. Not clothed in a fancy suit or dress, but much more comfortable and confident in a pair of jeans and a ball cap. Someone that brings people together rather than divides them. Someone that sees past someone's outside, and is very intentional looking at what isn't someone inside. Someone that respects, loves, and honors our military men and women, our personal responders, our law enforcement. Someone that if you are fortunate enough to truly get to know, you're blessed and you're a better person for knowing them. You see, C.L. is a man that's transparent. And if we were to replay his life on a video screen like a movie, there'd be very little that would surprise you. You see, he's a man that's, what you see is what you get. We should all aspire to be like C.L. Tidwell. Because of C.L. Tidwell's heart and love for people, he started a bipartisan breakfast to bring people together over thirty years ago. On any given monthly breakfast at his farm, his cabin, you'll encounter a governor, a presidential candidate, a U.S. Senator, a lieutenant governor, a member of U.S. House, judges, and many other elected officials. But what is unique is that the focus of the breakfast is not on a famous person attending. It's about bringing the community together. You could say C.L. is the epitome of a very successful community organizer. See, storms, hurricanes, fires, even elections tend to put fences up. Men and women, like C.L. Tidwell, tears fences down. C.L., it is an honor to have you and your family here today. Standing beside you is not only your family, but other people in the community that have been able to spend time and see you and see your actions when no one else has been able to see it. On the stage, I have our Commissioner, I have our Bishop of Bartow County, David Franklin, I have our Tax Commissioner, I have a Judge, Mitch Scoggins, and many others. And it's important that as we get to the opportunity to be able to recognize people that are at work in our communities, to be able to do things like we're doing here today. C.L., I'm gonna have you come up, but one of the things I want to read real quick is a proclamation from Governor Deal. Whereas Mr. Carl Lewis is a proud Georgian citizen who has established himself as a leader within Bartow County community. Mr. Tidwell was born in nineteen forty to Herschel and Ethel Tidwell, who instilled within him a love of farming and a strong work ethic. Mr. Tidwell and his late wife, Doris, founded Tidwell Plumbing in Bartow Precast. And whereas for more than thirty years, Mr. Tidwell has hosted the men's breakfast, should be, there's women there as well, providing a casual and friendly environment for in-depth political discussions on both sides. The event has been attended by local and statewide elected officials, including Presidents of the United States, the Governor of Georgia, and the U.S. Senate. Mr. Tidwell has been active with U. Harley Masonic Lodge for more than fifty years and a devoted member of Cartersville First Baptists. Throughout his life, he's faithfully cared and supported for his family, including his two children and three grandchildren. Whereas through his kindness and generosity of spirit, Mr. Tidwell has inspired those fortunate enough to know him. He continues to share his words of wisdom with family and friends, and serves as a mentor to countless others in need of guidance. Whereas through his efforts and contributions to his local community, Mr. Tidwell has earned the respect and admiration of his family, friends, federal citizens, and anyone pleasured to know him. Signed, Governor Nathan Deal.
I'm a country boy, raising the country, still living in the country. Raised very hard. And I was a twelve-year-old before we ever got electricity. Daddy went to town one Saturday and came back with a radio, said we can listen to the Grand Ole Opry on Saturday night. We was thrilled to death. Well, Saturday night comes and we all gather around, he said they can't be two of you listening at it one time and it'll run the battery down. Oh, and that's a little bit of a joke, but there's a lot of truth in it. Next thing is, you know, I look around here and I see some people kinda like me aging a little bit. Makes me think of the time this old man woman woke up one morning, she looked over at him and said, "I'm dead." He said, "You're not dead." She said, "I gotta be. I ain't aching and hurting nowhere." So that's the way you tell when you wake up, you ain't hurt and you're still alive. But that's quite an honor, and I really appreciate it. Appreciate the gentleman I've known a long time coming down here and visiting with all of us. And I think, Mr. Thompson, I'm getting my lost name. Bruce, I'm sorry. But anyway, this is really an honor. It really makes me feel good, and I want to thank all of y'all. Any time you can come to Bartow County and have breakfast with us, we'd be glad to have you.
Well said. Good job. Good job. That's great. Everybody go down here and have a picture on the steps. Y'all come on right there.
Commemorate this.
We have another special group we would like to recognize at this time, and the Secretary will read a resolution.
Senate Resolution Eight EX by Senator Mullis of the Fifty-Third. A resolution commending the Gordon Lee High School Boys Golf Team for winning the twenty-eighteen GHSA Class A Public State Golf Championship. Whereas the Gordon Lee High School Boys Golf Team has established and maintained a proud tradition of excellence with equal emphasis on character and academics. And whereas the superlative team has completed another triumphant season of golf competition by posting an outstanding record as twenty-eighteen Area Champions, five-star Invitational Tournament Champions, and setting a school-record team score of three-hundred in the final round of the State Championship Tournament. And whereas excellent play, superior dedication, and extraordinary resilience make this team a spectacular one to observe throughout the season in a fitting finale to its remarkable twenty-eighteen campaign, the team captured the State Golf Championship after also finishing as State Champions in twenty-seventeen. And whereas this all-star team included Tucker Wyndham, Gary Weldon, Jacob Carlock, Christian Boyd, Cole Walker, Gunner Williams, and Greg Mullis. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate that the members of this body commend the Gordon Lee High School Boys Golf Team for winning the twenty-eighteen GHSA Class A Public State Golf Championship and extend their most sincere best wishes for continued success. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Gordon Lee High School Golf Team, double-A went, oh, single-A? It was more impressive when I said double-A. Don't let the truth get in the way of a good story, Senator. But we are very, very honored to have these great gentlemen that are going on to compete even at the collegiate level, and something that they will enjoy for the rest of their life. And we are very, very honored to have them present with us today. Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? Chairs none. The resolution is adopted. To speak to the resolution, it's now my honor to recognize a very proud fellow, the Senator from the Fifty-Third.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is a great day. We can bring your alma mater back to this beautiful state capital and recognize them. Gordon Lee High School Single-A Golf Team is State Champs for two years in a row. This year happens to have my son, who, good-looking young man, who got his looks from me, of course, and we're glad that they're all back. But Coach, they are led by Coach Wyndham, who is an outstanding golfer, and his son's part of the golf team as well, and he does a phenomenal job. Coach, would you say a few words?
Thank you, Senator Mullis. Thank you, Senate, for honoring us today, for having us as your guest. I will mention that I'm not quite the good golfer. I'm better known as the bus driver. So, but, but we do have an outstanding, and thank you. I got in the way of telling that lie. I didn't. So, I will say, thank, I'm very pleased with what our golf team has done. They've been on a great run the last couple of years. As was mentioned, we're back-to-back state champions, but that, I think there's a little more to the story. One thing that they've done the last two years, which I think really speaks volumes to, to the types of young men they are, is in the final round, the State Championship round, in each of the last two years, they have broken the school record for team scores in successive years. So, I think when you can bring your best level to that level of competition, I think that says something. And so, I'm very pleased. And again, thank you for having us today.
Senate Resolution Nine EX by Senator Martin of the Ninth, honoring the life and memory of James Clarence Bubbles Haney.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Secretary will read another resolution.
Senate Resolution Eleven EX by Senators Watson of the First, Hill of the Fourth, and Jackson of the Twenty-Second. A resolution recognizing and commending Lieutenant Colonel David C. Simons upon the occasion of his retirement from the Georgia Air National Guard.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Also have a group visiting with us from Hall County, Cherokee Bluff. Real proud to have you guys present with us today as well. Let's give them a round of applause. Right.
Mr. President, thank you very much. It's a great pleasure to bring these young people and their teacher, Jeremy Purdy, down this morning. They're studying political science at Cherokee Bluff's High School, and these young people had a chance to go back to another high school that, that a lot of their friends went to, but they chose to stay at their home high school. And I really have a great respect for their commitment to their community. And I know they're gonna make great contributions to their community going forward. If y'all give them a warm Senate welcome, I'd be very appreciative.
Any Senator wishing to rise on a point of personal privilege? Chair recognizes Senator from the Twenty-Ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we have now entered, I believe today is the tenth day since we had the general election here in Georgia. And all one-hundred-and-fifty-nine counties around our state have certified their results. And after that arduous process, after several lawsuits being filed, the winner is still the winner from Tuesday, Election Day. It is time at this point for this process to come to a close. I think I'm probably the only person in this chamber who's actually filed an election contest. That's where you allege, not that votes are still yet to be counted, but that there was some illegality about the way the election was conducted. Now, I spent a year traveling around this state, seeking the Office of Secretary of State. I had the opportunity to visit with many of our election superintendents, who are not partisan, and many of our boards of elections, who are not partisan. There are hundreds of folks who, on a volunteer basis, serve in their communities to make sure that elections are conducted properly. This year was no exception. There are thousands of people that spend Election Day and early voting, working in precincts and early voting locations to make sure that every vote is properly cast and counted. counted. What happened this year was no different than any other election in Georgia. So the truth of the matter is that it's time to bring this to a close. To attack the legitimacy of our electoral process is to attack the foundation of self-government itself. We all expect you fight hard, you work hard, and then you accept the result of an election. I was involved in an election this summer, and the margin of that election, a statewide election, was 10 times smaller than the margin in this race. There was no demand for a recount. There were no lawsuits filed. Nobody was questioning the electoral process. You know, you take your lump and you move on down the road. And that's what needs to happen here. And Mr. President, if I could make one more observation. Equally dangerous is the suggestion that we are living in a time of pervasive racism on the part of people that serve in government. We're not living in the 1950s or the 1960s. We're living in 2018. And the people who conduct our elections, when I was in Muskogee County watching our Board of Elections meet, a board composed of three black women, one white woman, and one white man, race did not matter in that room. They just wanted to make sure they got the result right. And we have to stop living in a culture of permanent grievance, of eternal grievance. It is going to destroy our country. It's going to destroy our state. We have got to come together and accept, we disagree. We have disagreements in this chamber all the time. But you disagree, you have a vote, and then you accept the result and you move on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Senator from the 9th on a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I rise this morning to bring the Senate's attention to the festival of Diwali. Diwali is the largest and most celebrated Hindu festival. This festival is currently being celebrated by millions of Hindus, Buddhists, Janes, and Sikhs all over our country, all over our world, and all around our state. Diwali symbolizes the victory of good over evil and light over darkness. It is also a time to be grateful for the things we have. In this time of reflection, I can't help but be humbled, knowing that I have an amazing family and countless friends of various backgrounds that enhance my life every day. And I'm particularly grateful to represent such a diverse district that includes many families that worship at the largest Hindu mandir in North America. And that mandir hosts the largest Diwali celebration in the Southeast. Here's to wishing all that celebrate Diwali a happy Diwali festival, and to many in the Hindu faith, a happy and prosperous new year. Thank you for enriching the fabric of our great state with your presence, culture, and traditions, your business, employment, and love. In this season, know that I'm proud to represent you as your state senator. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the will.
Chair recognizes Senator from the 36th on a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I thought I might get through this special session without coming to the well. But what brings me here today are comments that you just heard from the gentleman from Columbus and Muskogee County, that we should take our lumps and move on after an election. The very bedrock foundation of a democracy is transparency in a voting process where all votes are counted, where all of the laws are followed, and where everyone gets an opportunity to cast their vote, that is eligible to vote. I don't think you want to hear a seminar today of the irregularities across the state. There are court proceedings, briefings, briefs that have laid this out in full detail. The record in this state is clear. All of the prominent media outlets in the country, print and television and radio, have pointed to the fact that we had a person running for office who was also overseeing the very election in which he was holding a position on the ballot to be elected governor. That in and of itself is alarming and concerning, and was found to be so by opinions across the country. Now, to sit back and see after this statewide voter protection operation that was fielded in order to help ensure that people had the access to the ballot and the right to vote, and that the process was conducted legally and in a manner which did not create barriers, you don't turn away from those findings, turn a blind eye and walk away and not bring those forward. Now, this Secretary of State that just stepped out of office after proclaiming himself governor, the new governor, that Secretary of State is in court recently, almost on a weekly basis, if not bi-weekly basis. We have federal court rulings to address the irregularities, the failure to count ballots. I'll give you one example. You didn't write your right birth date when you submitted the ballot where you signed this thing. That is not in the law, but that was a judgment of election officials to disqualify those votes that were cast that way. Well, a federal judge ordered that those votes be counted. Now, do we sit back and let those votes remain uncounted out of some sort of decorum that's been asked for? These are serious matters. These are grave matters. And when people come to believe that their ballot is not going to be counted, or that they're going to be turned away, there were inadequacies around provisional ballots, around the voting cards all across the state. And we do have a highly documented situation where in a majority African-American county, Randolph County, nine out of 12 precincts were going to be closed until that became nationally known, nationally noted, and the Elections Board had a two- or three-minute meeting and changed, reversed their decision. There had been a recommendation that had been given to them by a consultant who was recommended to them by the Secretary of State. There are, as I said, we do not want a seminar today on the countless irregularities. There was a press conference this week. You'd have an opportunity to come down and look at the provisional ballots that were still outstanding and still unresolved and not being counted. My county had many, many, many of those. We've fought in this chamber and across the hall on efforts to reduce the days for early voting. We fought, there have been efforts to disallow Sunday voting. We've had comments made that African-American churches bring their congregations to vote on Sunday, souls to the polls, and so we should certainly shut that down. That's a bad trend. And people are on record of having said that. So we've fought back efforts over and over to reduce peoples, that have been attempts to reduce people's access to the ballot. Early voting has been enormously successful. Over 60% of Georgians voted in early voting this year. If the bills that had been introduced by the GOP had passed, early voting would have been shut down. It's already been reduced. So we're not going to stand silent in the cradle of the civil rights movement where people fought, walked, marched, bled, and died for the right to vote. In my home state of Virginia, where I was raised, by a daddy from Mitchell County, people were beaten down in Danville for trying to vote. So we have a history. We need to honor that history, and we need to ensure that the votes are counted, and I cannot remain silent when a finger is pointed at us accusing candidates of insisting on an accurate vote count in this election. Thank you very much, and apologize for going over, Mr. President. Appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Senator from the 35th on a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I have had so many wonderful friends and constituents to request resolutions and proclamations and honorary citizen awards for the past few months. And didn't know I had a limit, but they told me that I reached my limit when I got to 15. So I couldn't tell people to stop dying when they got to 15. So at this time, I'd just like to pay my respects to some of those who you wouldn't allow me to give resolutions or outstanding citizen awards, posthumously too, because you gave me a limit for the many people who I wanted to give respect and honor to. And I would like to start with Judge Willie L. Lovett Jr., who passed away. And Judge Lovett was born in 1963 in Savannah, Georgia, and graduated as valedictorian at Alfred Beach High School. And he had these great accomplishments. He graduated from Emory Law School at the top of his class. He served us well in many courts, and he was a great judge, and he died, and he passed away. He was a person of magnanimous strength with an impeccable reputation for integrity, intelligence, fairness, and kindness. And he was really great in our community. And we gave him honor on the 6th of September. Also, Ms. Goodlett, who was a Lilian Dickerson Goodlett, who died that same month. Also, Ms. Elizabeth Slate, who died last week, and I went to her funeral and couldn't give her a proclamation or outstanding citizen award, and she clearly was an outstanding citizen and should have been honored. And then I go to the funeral of the person that tomorrow, who just many, many years ago, just a few miles from here, played on the playground with this young lady, Brenda Gail Rogers at that time, and now Jones. And we went to Our Lady of Lourdes Catholic School just a few miles from here, and we grew up together. And she went on to finish college here and to teach at Clark Atlanta University, and she passed away. And so her funeral is tomorrow morning, and I probably will miss it because I'll be sitting here in this chamber voting. But I want to give honor to all of these people and so many more. I have about 18 other ones who did pass away, and I hope we'll change that rule when we come back, because some of you may not need 15 or more resolutions, but some of us, too, have large constituencies who request things all the time and who we should be able to honor and give honor to whom honor is due, as the Bible says. So thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And for just one brief minute, will you please stand and give homage to not only these people's memories, but to everyone who has passed away and we have not been able to honor them this one wonderful moment?
Let us stand. The senator is requesting a moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
In the name of Jesus, we pray. Thank you. Amen. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Senator from the 28th on a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. You know, this is my very first special session, and I really didn't know what to expect. And it's, you know, it's quite different than our regular sessions. But now, I just want to really thank the Senator from the 36th and the Senator from the 29th, because with them rebutting each other, it makes me feel at home, and I feel like we can now get back to official business and officially start this session. So thank you. Without a yield of will.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, that's beautiful. Beautiful. Absolutely beautiful. Yes. Very articulate, Senator. All of Coweta County is very proud of you, I can assure you. All right, we're going to take up the governor's appointments at this time. Chair recognizes Senator from the 30th.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent that the reading of the names of the governor's appointments to various boards, authorities, and commissions be dispensed with since they have been printed and placed on the desk.
Is there objection? Hold on, why are all the lights on? Senator from the 40th, you want to speak? 21st, are you wishing? Okay, all right, that's fine. Okay, no worries. That's fine. Okay. Is there objection? Without objection, we will read the names of the governor's appointments in the various boards authorized and commissions be dispensed with. Chair now recognizes Senator from the 30th again.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent that one roll call suffice to confirm all appointments unless any senator designates that an appointee be removed from the list and voted on individually.
Is there objection? Without objection, we will take one roll call vote. Chair recognizes again Senator from the 30th.
Mr. President, I move that the governor's appointees to the various boards, commissions, and authorities be confirmed as submitted.
Thank you, Senator. Senator from the 40th, what purpose do you rise?
Mr. President, I ask unanimous consent to be excused from voting on the confirmation of governor's appointments pursuant to Senate Rule 5-1.8D.
Senator has that right. Is there objection? Without objection, the senator will be excused from voting. Chair recognizes Senator from the 21st.
Mr. President, I ask unanimous consent to be excused from voting on the governor's confirmation of appointments pursuant to Senate Rule 5-1.8D.
Senator has that right. Is there objection? Without objection, the senator will be excused from the vote. Chair recognizes Senator from the 17th.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent to be excused from voting on the confirmation of governor's appointments pursuant to Senate Rule 5-1.8D.
Without objection, senator is excused. We keep excusing each other. We're not going to have enough to pass. We're about to find out. Senator from the 47th, you going to be excused too?
Thank you, Mr. President. Said there's a real questionable guy on there, so I'm going to ask that unanimous consent to be excused from voting pursuant to Rule 5-1.8.
All right. Very good. Without objection, senator will be excused. Senator from the 29th, you are... Yes, recognized. Speak to the bill, or, I'm sorry, speak to the motion.
I'll be very brief, Mr. President. I just wanted to put this on the record. I have had a longstanding practice of voting no on the appointments as a group. I didn't want to object because I don't want to slow down our business. It is my intention to vote no. The last time I did this, I just quietly voted no from my seat, and then everyone in my district who received a no vote got a letter from the governor's office informing them of my no vote. So I just wanted to make sure that there was a record of why I'm voting no, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. I don't know if I've told you guys lately how much I'm going to miss you. I just feel like now would be the time, you know? Senator from the 29th, what purpose you rise?
President, parliamentary inquiry.
State inquiry.
Isn't it true that if I had not been trying to, I guess, abbreviate my, already abbreviated remarks, that I would have said, my reason for voting no is the volume of appointees and the fact that there's been no confirmation process other than they've been placed on our desks? That's what I would have said in explaining my no vote.
Very good. Very good. Duly noted, Senator. Duly noted. It is now time to consider the confirmation of the governor's appointees, and all of those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. And the secretary will unlock the machine. On the confirmation of the governor's appointees, the yays are forty and the nays are one, and all the governor's wonderful appointees have been confirmed. Chair, that concludes our business for the day. Chair recognizes the distinguished senator from the thirtieth.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate stand adjourned until eight-thirty a.m. on Saturday, November seventeenth.
Eight-thirty. Eight-thirty. Please set your alarm. I'm worried about the senator from the fifty-fourth being able to get up that early. And the fifty-third, too, for that matter. What's your point? Chair recognizes Senator from the fifty-third to make an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind everybody, we have a Rules Committee meeting upon adjournment of this great body, and the lieutenant governor will have entry music if he wants to come.
Think I'll pass on that, Senator. Are there any announcements? That was the announcement. Rules Committee, don't forget. The distinguished majority leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until eight-thirty a.m. Saturday, November the seventeenth. All of those in favor will say aye. All those opposed, no. I may have to ask James Salzer to interpret whether the ayes clearly have it, but I'm-- nope, I'm not going to take his opinion. The ayes clearly have it. We stand adjourned.[809.86]
Most important committee today in the building, I think the only one right now. Fran, good of calling you for our devotion.
Sure. Bow your heads please. Dear heavenly fathers, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here. Please guide us in our decisions and deliberations. Please bless our troops here in this country and overseas, protect them from harm. We thank you for all our blessings. In holy name we pray, amen.
Good to see everybody on a special session. Good to see Marty, and you'll have to figure that one out yourself. Let's start it out with our first presenter, Senator Hill. HB 1 EX.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to prolong the presentation. I think that I would sum it up by saying this bill presents $270 million in additions, in addition revenue. It's been recognized by the governor in raising the revenue estimate that is directed towards hurricane relief. Most of it is in general funds, but some 69 million or so is in highway fuel tax funds as well. But it's distributed through the governor's emergency fund and mainly to the Georgia Development Authority for dispersal to farmers, timber growers, and others. It supports local governments in trying to help them survive some of the costs that they've incurred in meeting this contingency. And removes most of the items, the two items that were previously in there that were not related to the emergency, the Mercer Medical School and the Aviation School in Paulding County have been removed to be considered at a later time. So they're not in this bill. So with that short presentation, I'd be happy to try to answer questions, but we had a very good presentation this morning at appropriations.
Any questions for the sponsor? Senator Miller, do you have a motion?
At an appropriate time.
It is?
A motion to pass.
I think for a second.
Second.
Second from Senator Kennedy. Any discussion? All in favor of passing HB 1 EX to the floor. Say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. Thank you, Senator Hill. I'd call on Senator Walker to present HB 4 EX. No, yeah?
Mr. Chairman, we need information on the first and Senator first.
We'd be honored to hear from the good doctor from southwest Georgia who knows this issue personally. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks Senator Walker for the ability to do this. Obviously, this bill means a lot to me and my district. I don't have any pine trees myself except for the ones that fell in my yard, and obviously there was no remuneration for me for that other than me writing a check for somebody to take it out of my yard. But this bill is a great start, and I'll reinforce this just a start, to help the counties, 28 counties in southwest Georgia affected by this disaster. And this is the tax credit portion of the disaster relief bills that we're considering and provides 200 million in tax credits for those that are replanning their forest and have sustained such a great loss. Be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your indulgence.
All right, stand by. Any questions for the sponsor or the gentleman who lived in the area? Any questions? Senator Dugan?
I'd like to make a motion to pass.
All right, we have a motion passing for a second. Senator Wilkinson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. Thank you, Senator Dean Burke. Appreciate it. Senator Walker, HB 5 EX.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee. The purpose of this special session and our focus in the Senate is to fund relief for the victims of Hurricane Michael and the devastation there. But our constitution calls on us to also ratify or take up any executive order since we last met. So this bill is the elimination of the sales tax on jet fuel. We have thoroughly vetted this. We actually talked about this earlier in the year at length, and I think we all understand it. I'll be happy to answer any questions though, if there are any.
Any questions? Senator Henson?
So two points. One, you know, the governor made a commitment, I think, and we're living up to that commitment for economic development purposes. But is it true that the bill, A, will require for a permanent, you know, year after year tax abatement for us to come back and have a session to deal with it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Minority Leader. This would sunset June 30th of 2019, the exemption, if passed.
Is there any language clarifying the process in the future if this kind of tax cut was done, for the governor doing it, et cetera?
Yes, sir. It's moving the jet fuel sales tax issue from one part of the code section into another and is requiring a state of emergency and a two-thirds vote of the legislature in order to, for the governor to exempt it again after that.
Any other questions?
All right, looking for a motion. Senator Henson?
A motion to pass.
Have a second from Senator Gooch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say no. All right, move to the floor. Thank you very much. So House Bill 1 EX, House Bill 4 EX, what? The House Bill 5 EX. Senator, I'm sorry, Senator Miller, you have a recognition to make?
Yeah, real quickly.
Use your mic.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Rules Committee would like to recognize my friend Jeremy Purdy from Hall County School System. Jeremy, stand up please. Jeremy brings a group of students here, and he is helping shed young minds.
Are they in the audience, the students?
They are not.
Okay.
They're outside. I think they're smoking cigarettes in the car.
He didn't mean that, does off the record. All right, y'all have a good day. We'll see you in the morning.
What time in the morning?
We'll be on the floor of the Senate. We'll be on the floor of the Senate. Convening in the Senate.